You're pretty sure that this study is going to reveal those numbers that are in question right now? I mean, do you think this, is it your understanding that the study is going to discuss the amounts of max rainfall that we've seen in the past and address that amount of water? Or are these, is this study just looking at how to move water in general and where it might be clogging rather than actual amounts? Are you, and where I'm going with this is, I think I remember that the study was supposed to be done before the end of the year for this part of town. Other studies are going well on into February, but I thought this was one of the quicker ones. So, I guess where I'm going with this is if we held off for another two weeks, would we know any more? And I'm kind of thinking the answer might be no. If we held off for four weeks, would we know more? The answer might be yes. And are we, you know, as Mr. McRae Q. was saying, are we gambling a little too much? Are we rolling the dice that we're going to dodge more rain bullets? So, are you pretty sure that you'll be able to take the results of this study and give us an actual recommendation based on science?
I would have to confer with the city engineer. He would be the one that would know the best answer to that question. I would imagine that the scope of work for the study was to look at pipe sizes, the retention base, and all that would give some amount of volume of water that that system is currently holding. I'm sorry, that's the best answer I can give you.
That's okay. And in simplest, general terms, the pump can only help the situation, we just don't know how much.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Shockey.
I don't remember how many homes actually flooded in this area.
I don't believe I have that information. I can obtain that. I'm sure the city engineer has some understanding of the scope of that.
I think there's a lot of more information we need here. We weren't on the committee. We don't know exactly what's going on. I'd like to make a motion to table it back to committee so that we can get that information from the city engineer or from that ongoing study that we're paying how much money for? $12,000 or $18,000?
Second.
If I can get you to withdraw your second, just for a minute. I won't recognize your second just a minute yet. I want to see if there's some defer to the aldermen of that ward to see if they have any comments, then I'll attain the motion to, or the second. At that point, that takes precedence over the existing motion and becomes non-debatable, and there's no further comments. So, we have a motion to table from Shockey. We do not have a second yet. Alderman, please.
Again, this committee was formed to make a recommendation for interim basis. If you speak to Dave, he's going to tell you that, you know, this isn't his specialty, bottom line. He's not stormwater specialist. The bottom line is if we're going to put a committee like this together and waste citizens' time, staff time, and anybody else's time, and then comes the council and we're going to wait for the study, why put these committees together if we're just going to waste everybody's time and then we're going to wait for the study anyways? That should have been said right at the beginning because now we've got all these other questions. I'll be honest, I'm not an engineer. I can't answer, I'm not a, I have no storm-ready, nothing. Best thing we came up with was the pump, trying to save the houses. I don't know how many basements exactly, that was never discussed in the committee. I know over the past few years, maybe it's been about dozen homes have gotten water at one time or another. Mine was one of them, but, you know, that's besides the point. If we're not going to follow through with recommendations from these ad hoc committees, then don't waste everybody's time. That's all.
Alderman Coles.
Well, we looked over all the plans. I looked over the plans. I'm not an engineer. I, there's pipes in there that are 30 inches in diameter, there's pipes that are 18 inches in diameter, there's pipes that are 12 inches in diameter. There are pipes that run from Montrose up to Tall Oaks to relieve the water that, from Montrose to Tall Oaks. There's a retention pond down at the end of Porter that never gets any water in. Where Porter used to flood years ago, because I've been in this area for a long time, it don't flood there anymore. Now, it's come up further up north, further up west. It's in an area, and it's a temporary thing unless we put some pipes in someplace to change the water in that area. We've got to do something, and we've got to do it temporary. And that's why we have decided, we decided to get a pump for it. Now, I know Cedar floods, and I know the house that floods in Cedar because that used to be in my ward. And there's problems over at Cedar because there isn't enough of drains over there, and they're not allowed to drain stuff in the forest preserve because the forest preserve don't want water in it, but that's where the water comes from. But we arrived at this, and we've been at this meeting, we, everybody's come and everybody's tried to give their opinion, and I thought that that's what we were there for. I don't, I don't mind wasting my, I don't mind being there time-wise, I don't mind doing it, but if I'm going to come and I'm going to sit at a meeting and nothing's going to be arrived at it, that's wasting my time. I'm too old to waste my time because I ain't going to be here much longer. All right? So, let's do what we have to do and get it over with. Okay? Thank you. That's my opinion.
Alderman Wesley, did you have a final comment? Alderman Winger.
Yeah, you know, I'm not against doing a solution for this, and I don't think that any of us up here would want to stop something from helping the community. And, but I would expect the committee to first have consensus on the recommendation and all agree that this is the right thing to do. And I'm not, I'm not hearing that. I'm not hearing that all parties are convinced that this is the solution. And secondly, it would be nice to know who are the affected homes? Like, are we focused on one home? Or are there six? Or are there two? Or like, how is this going to help? Is it only going to help three out of the six? I mean, these are some things that it would be nice to know before. And are we actually voting on this expenditure tonight? I'm not clear. Thank you.
Not if the motion to table is approved. Alderman Shockey, is your motion to table to December 10th, the Public Works Committee? Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Alderman Winger, are you seconding?
Yes.
Alderman, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Cadala?
No.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Police?
No.
Thanks, guys.
Mayor.
I just said, "Thank you." Certainly, I appreciate the work of the committee, and this is something we need to go forward with. However, I agree with those that have stated that we don't have enough information yet to proceed as to what size pump we need. I think when this comes back before us, I will be voting for the pump, the temporary solution, but I do want to make sure it's sized right, so I vote yes on the motion to table. That passes. And that brings us to, also on the mayor's report, I want to remind everybody of the Veterans Breakfast, which is this Saturday from 8:30 to 10:30 at Salt Creek Country Club. It's sponsored by I Task a Bank and Trust. From 8:30 to 10:30, all veterans are invited, along with their family and their guests. We will need servers. The Park District will be dispensing the food. We will need Alderman to help with the coffee service. Alderman Coles had said he's available. I see Alderman Winger, she's available. Alderman Shockey. Was that Alderman Wesley? Were you combing your hair? Or was that a?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Alderman Wesley? Okay, very good. That would be appreciated. The memorial service, if the weather is bad, will be at Salt Creek Country Club. If not, it will be at the memorial site at 11:00 AM, and the public is invited to that as well. And I believe that concludes my report. Mr. Manager?
Couple items coming up for next week's meeting, ladies and gentlemen. I want to let you know about those. First of all, we're going to have a presentation by our auditors on the result of the fiscal year 2009 audit, as well as some updates with respect to where we stand financially for fiscal year 2010, and our best guess of where we might be in 2011. This is sort of setting the stage for budget discussions that will come about later, or I should say, earlier next year. Also, just so you know, the city's franchise agreement with Allied Waste for its solid waste contract expires in April of next year, and pursuant to the contract, we have to let them know by the end of December whether we wish to go out and rebid that contract or whether we wish to enter into discussions to renew that for a period of time. And we want to talk about that with the city council next week and get a sense for where the council may be. So, that will also be coming up. It's going to be a fairly substantive agenda next week, and I would encourage all of you who can to attend because there are a couple relatively meaty items on the agenda. Other than that, mayor, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Going back to mayor's report, there was an additional item. We received a request from the Wooddale Stormwater Committee. Alderman Cadala?
Oh, I just wanted to go on record here. I was saying that on October 21st of this year, the Stormwater Commission made a series of five motions, the intent of which is to assist and implement flood alleviation measures. And I would just like to strongly encourage that each of these five, as quickly as possible, be put on the appropriate committee agendas.
Alderman Wesley, will you add that to your agenda?
Here, Mayor.
Thank you.
Some of these could be considered public health and safety as well, so we might want to sort these out at a later, or sooner than later date.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right. The manager will assign them as to the appropriate committee as he sees fit. And that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any objections to any items on the consent agenda? Alderman Lewitin?
Yes, numbers five and 10.
Number five and number 10 will be removed. Alderman Coles, did you have?
I have a question. I'd like to, I'd like to, on the safety, public health and safety for next week, I'd like to add on something about senior citizens are looking for help to remove leaves, and they want to put them in the street and have the city pick them up because they're getting to the point where, in our area alone, there's 60% of the people are senior citizens who have private houses, which they're getting to the point where they can't do them. And it's costing them a lot of money with these bags. One guy had 19 bags, so 19 bags of leaves, it was a lot for one week. And we've had 12 and 16 over the last three weeks. We're in a city called Trees, Tree City, and we have trees all over, and I think we should give some consideration to senior citizens.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have the mic on. But that's something I like to put on public health and safety.
I think that's probably more appropriately on the Public Works Committee. I think you're talking about the sucker truck and the public works guys picking up the leaves, I presume?
Yes, public works picking up the leaves.
All right, and that we cannot do by December, so that will be at a future meeting at staff's discretion.
Here, Mayor.
In 2010. Thank you for your cooperative spirit, Alderman Wesley. Alderman Winger?
Item number nine.
Alderman number nine will be removed. Alderman Shockey?
Item number one.
Item number one will be removed. May I have a motion to approve the agenda being items two, three, four, six, seven, and eight?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, may I have a motion to approve the items on, remaining on the consent agenda, being approval of payment request number three to FBG Corporation for the Metro Train Station, the amount of $255,352.79. Approval of purchase two machines, terminal remote monitoring from Parking Solutions, and ordinance amending Chapter 8, Article 8, Section 8.803 of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale Regarding Sale of Vehicle Licenses. Approval of purchase of vehicle to replace vehicle 557, the amount not to exceed $155,000. An ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the City of Wooddale, and a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a temporary utility construction easement for the purpose of certain sanitary sewers. Is there such a motion?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Cadala?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Items two, three, four, six, seven is approved as ordinance O-09-30. Eight is approved as a resolution R-09-19. The other matters will be taken up under other business. That brings us to committee chairman reports, planning and zoning and building. Alderman Cadala.
First item on the agenda is an ordinance approving the execution of an economic incentive agreement by and between the City of Wooddale, Thornton Inc., and Gulo International Development Corporation. Can I please have a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Moved in, seconded by Alderman Coles on the question?
Yeah, question.
Alderman Lewitin?
I really more have an utterance than a question. We know that the agreement is for $1,250,000 over a 10-year period or until the...
20 years.
20 years, or until the amount of the money is reached, if at an earlier date due to the increased cost of gasoline and the improved sales at your establishment. However, according to the agreement, there are also two other reasons that the payments would terminate. And I just want to read them into the minutes and then ask you that you are aware of them and that you did agree to them. One of them is the 1% sales tax is not guaranteed in a 20-year period. It's a long time. You have agreed that if the General Assembly of the State of Illinois will modify or eliminate the distribution of sales tax revenue to Illinois municipalities, our obligation to pay you terminates at that time. The second is that if you are cited three times for liquor violations of selling to minors or other persons in violation of the ordinance of the Liquor Control Act of 1934, your payments cease. You are aware of this and you do agree to this. Can you take the podium, Mr. Richard Clas?
My name is Richard Clas. Yes, on both accounts, yes, we do understand that if the sales tax is eliminated by the Illinois Legislature, that the rebate payments would cease. And we do understand that if there is three violations in the same year of the local control ordinance, that we would be subject to a termination of the rebate. We understand those two things. For the record, and I think Pat would confirm this, we've exchanged a red line just today with the city attorney's office. So, I believe Pat's recommendation is going to be to approve subject to attorney approval. Most of the things that we have redlined were either grammatical or spelling issues. Thornton, for example, is, their legal name has an S on it, not just an N. It's a Delaware corporation, not a Kentucky, but there was just some cleanup items. But to address your question specifically, yes, on both accounts, we understand that.
Anything further?
No, that was all. I wanted to make sure that it was made public, and that doesn't change my concern to, my opinion that this is a good venture to put in. I just don't want anything cropping up later that somebody said they weren't aware of and it's a surprise. Thank you very much for taking the time to agree with this.
Thank you.
Alderman Cadala, is it your motion subject to attorney review?
Oh, yes, it is.
Alderman Coles, do you agree?
Yes, I do.
Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, we go ahead and approve a severance deal or whatever you want to call this thing. Are we coming? Right, Thornton Gas Station. My concern about this whole thing is, Mayor, are we offering severance deals for any other development comes in town whenever they request it? I mean, I understand that I wasn't at that meeting, and I totally understand, I totally understand the, you know, the floor model that came for, you know, strip mall and all that other stuff. But I will tell you that I will be voting no for this due to the fact is, I'm just concerned about any other developments coming forward and asking for a million dollars from the city. I mean, we have this open, we got a Thorndale Corridor study going now. What kind of deals are we going to cut up there for developers? I just think it's a bad timing right now for it. You know, I'm still concerned about, you know, the concern was about the EPA clean site. I watched the man, we cannot even guarantee me, after they laid the asphalt, that the state's going to give the clearance on that property. Cannot even guarantee me that letter's coming our way. Is there a way that we could get a letter from the state saying, once it's blacktopped in, they're going to release that letter saying it's all clean? No. I just don't, you know, he stood up there and says, "I can't guarantee you that we'll even get the clean letter." That was a statement that was made on TV. That's my concern. I will vote no for this due to the fact is, I just think, we do this one, we're going to have a lot of people along Thorndale coming in asking for a million, whatever we're giving for tax incentive. I cannot support this.
Anything further? Roll, Alderman Wesley?
I think this is going to be a good idea to go along with because, as we've seen the numbers before, if we take a chance with the shopping center in the future, we're only talking, what were the, dollar amount in sales tax actually?
Based upon some pro formas, maybe $20,000 a year.
$20,000 compared to what?
$125,000 of the general fund, split 50/50, and another $125,000 into our capital fund.
This is a no-brainer. If we don't do this now, that property stays vacant, and we take that chance of getting a shopping center for lousy, how much?
$20,000.
$20,000? And you know what? If we don't do this now, Thornton will go find somewhere else to go, and then we got nothing. So, I know it's rough times, but I see that we have to go with this. And Gulo International's been very good to Wooddale, Briscoe Park, when they came in with Briscoe Park, that was a lot of sales tax, not sales tax, but property taxes there too, and I think this is a good thing.
Alderman Lewitin?
The development you're referring to is Briscoe, which is right next to this property. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Since those people are the most close to the property, they have the most to gain or lose as an environmental issue. Because I'm the alderman in the fourth ward, one of them, and I was concerned about that, I explained the situation in writing, in a brochure, in an alderman letter, and I had it distributed throughout in the entire Bristol area on every person's house, explaining what was going on, about the money being given back to them, about the Thorntons being there. And I want to tell you that I didn't receive one negative call. There was nobody in opposition to this among 300 families.
Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, I just want you to know that when household or OSKO warehouse is going bye-bye, if someone decide come into that, guarantee you, they're going to come in here and ask for incentive too. So, I just want this council to be aware of that. If you do it for one, you better do it for all. Because if they're going to bring revenue in too, whatever they decide, build their level and build something else, better look at the door opening for there. I understand the shopping center won't even bring that kind of money. That's fine. But I'm just looking at the future of the city. If we keep giving all this money back, tax incentives to any business that comes forward, we are going to have a problem here. And I do not want to be that stickman.
Just for the record, this would not be a minding precedent. Each, each development can be handled on a case-by-case basis, and one does not tie in directly to the other. Each one is evaluated on its own merits. Alderman Shockey?
My concern was 20 years. I probably won't see 20 years. But what really kind of got me is a city manager from another town who has been having to lay off people because of the economy congratulated me the other night that we were getting this into Wooddale, that we're getting extra tax money. And when I heard that, I realized that, yeah, it's, I really don't especially like the idea for 20 years, but it's best for the city in my estimation. Thank you.
Alderman, please.
I don't have a problem with the gas station, and I know in some instances, the city's going to have to give incentives. My biggest concern on this was 1.2 million, I think it's an acre and a half lot, maybe two acres at the most. All right, I feel we're just setting a precedent because we got some big parcels coming up at the Thorndale Corridor, our downtown Wooddale and Irving Park. I understand we're going to need to do something in those areas. I think we're just setting a precedent at a million too. That was my biggest concern.
Alderman Coles?
I got one thing to say. The gas station should go in. If this was a TIF area, we wouldn't be getting any money back. The taxes would stay the same for what, 20 years or 23 years or something like that? You've got to remember that if it was a TIF area. I am a strong believer that the only way you're going to get outfits into the city is you've got to give them something back. And every town that's growing, if you have a plant, like down in Tennessee, they built a big Toyota plant down in Tennessee, and they gave them such X number of dollars back. They built a hotel, they built, they built homes for the people, they built everything for the workers. So, I mean, this is what has to be done nowadays. And I'm a strong believer, let's put the gas station in and get it done with.
Just to summarize, as everybody knows, we are in the middle of an economic recession, if not depression, particularly in that area. We're losing Household Bank Complex and 1,100 employees. We're losing the OSKO Complex, 125 employees, and we're losing Michael Lewis, which is four or five buildings and all the employees there, as well as being relocated. This is new revenue to the City of Wooddale in a time when our building department fees are down, our sales tax is flat, our income taxes are flat or down, but all of our wages pursuant to contracts are going to be going up 3% per year. So, this is $180,000 in new revenue over the life of this agreement. We are rebating the developer $1,250,000, but at the same time, the city is capturing new revenue of $3,750,000. Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Cadala?
No.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Police?
No.
That passes ordinance O-09-31.
Okay, next item, an ordinance approving a request to permit a special use to allow for the construction and operation of an auto service station at 110 West Devon.
Is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Cadala?
Yes.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman Police?
No.
That passes ordinance O-09-32. Who did the second on that one?
Roy.
I think it was Dan.
Dan.